Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, August 19th, 2015. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square and we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have two presentations this morning. The first one is on the Oregon State Fair. And is it Mike Palusak? Is that how you say your name?
It's Palashak.
Palashak, okay.
Close enough.
Right, okay. And then Tammy Getch is also here. Did you want to, you know, your just, moral support, alright. So, good morning and thank you for coming.
Well, thank you. And this is not as much of a presentation as an opportunity to introduce myself to you as the new Director of the Oregon State Fair. I have the privilege of working with Commissioner Cameron on our, on the State Fair Council. So, I'm really here for three reasons. One, just to say hello, I'm Mike, this is who I am. The second reason is, I wanted to say thank you for, we really enjoy hosting the Marion County Fair and working with Tamra and her staff, they do an amazing job for you, for us, and it's a real, it's a real pleasure to work with them. In addition, I really wanted to thank you for your support of the paving project that we just completed in conjunction with the Marion County Fair. It's a project that started last year. We kind of put our heads together and said, "How can we kind of do more, get ahead of it, finish, finish the project, if you will?" And that, that worked out very well and that was with your support. Additionally, we are utilizing some of the Sheriff's work crews, so we appreciate that help as well. As a new council, as a new entity, we're trying to do everything we can to streamline our operation, fix the place up, really kind of reinvigorate the State Fair and the Expo Center, and you've been a big part of that. We really, we point to Marion County as the sort of relationship alliance that will really allow both of us, the fair and the county, to thrive going forward. And I just wanted to say, thank you for that, thank you for the support and the opportunity to work with your folks. They were, they were great, the fair was great, and we look forward to having them with us for many years, so. The third reason I'm here is really to officially invite you to the 150th Oregon State Fair. It kicks off Friday night with pairings. We hope to, we hope to see you there. That's a celebration of Oregon, samplings of wine, spirit, brews and cuisines, music by five guys named Mo, who I've heard a lot about, but I haven't heard them yet. People say that they're very popular and backed by demand. In, because it's our 150th opening day of the fair, we're offering $1.50 admission to the fair until 5:00 on opening day. There's other admission and carnival savings all over town, really, at Safeway, Albertsons, Walgreens, Sleep Train Stores, I won't bore you with all that, it's all on our website. But, there's lots of ways to save to, to come to the fair. Veterans Day honoring both current and former military folks on September 1st, we'll offer free admission to all former and active members of the US Armed Forces. The fair, like in the past, will, like in the past, but better, will offer exhibits of, showcase exhibits of everything from art, animals and azaleas, to zinc, zinfandel and zucchinis. So, there's everything there is to see at the fair. You'll see creepy creatures, diving dogs, you'll discover dinosaurs, there's continuous entertainment contests and shopping, and of course, everybody's favorite fair food and food and more food. And I don't know what we're deep frying this year, but if it can be deep fried, it's probably at the fair, and there's no calories in the food at the fair, so, just so you'll know. We have an impressive lineup of concert entertainment, which is free with admission, or you can purchase advance VIP tickets for preferred seating. Just a couple of days ago, we learned that one of our acts for medical reasons canceled. We're in the process of finding another act to fill that slot, and that should be announced within the next couple of days, I would think. To cap off the 150th celebration day at the fair, for many years, the State Fair has not done this, but we wanted to do something really to add a real spark and a punch to the end of your day, so at 9:45 every night, we'll shoot fireworks to top off your day at the fair. I would encourage you to visit oregonstatefair.org for complete details. I will just say, thank you again for your support of the Expo Center. We invite you to the fair, we hope to see you there, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here to say hello and officially invite you and the citizens of Marion County to the fair.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mike. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, and I know, starting a business totally from scratch is what we've been doing, what you've been doing, and how hard and difficult that is. And Ellen Haley, our Director of Public Works, is here today and want to acknowledge them, and thank you, Ellen, for the great work that your people did. At the county fair, it looks so wonderful out there with that new paving and, and the contract, and thinking long-term, so I really appreciate that. One thing you didn't mention, don't forget Jerry's Chocolate Cake Contest. I mean, if Jerry's listening this morning, which he probably is, we had to bring him up. And then, one of my favorites is the Dairy Barn. I have to look over at my fellow commissioner, because we raced to get there to get our-
The Dairy Women's Ice Cream?
Dairy, Dairy Women's Ice Cream.
Right, yeah, you're talking about ice cream.
And then go see the pigs for bacon, so.
Can read your mind.
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So, I've got a few comments, too, if you would, and thank you. Usually, we, all three commissioners will kind of have a little bit of an interchange here. Did you want to make comments before?
No.
Alright, so, first of all, thank you for coming. Second of all, we appreciate Commissioner Cameron serving on the State Fair Council. I was appointed to serve on it initially and served on it over, I can't remember, its first number of months-
Couple of years, right.
-until you were actually appointed to the board. And then, because Commissioner Cameron is focused on economic development, and we tasked him in our county for aligning all these different economic development issues, we saw the State Fair as an economic driver in our community and felt like that was an appropriate place for him to serve, excuse me. So, we contacted the Governor's Office and they unappointed me and appointed him, and it's worked out really well, and I do appreciate his service. We have strong board involvement at our Marion County Fair, you need to know that. Commissioner Brentano regularly does cheesecake, pies, I don't know, what else do you use?
Cheesecakes, and then I'm pretty fair, I don't know if this is on. That ain't better than good.
Now it's on.
And Kevin's right, I've checked their milkshake quality on numerous occasions, and I've never been dissatisfied, so, I don't know if that's just lucky me, or how it always is.
So, we hold our greeters on Friday morning at the fair also, and the commissioners always come down. And then, we have a mayor legislative dinner at the fair where we invite the mayors from the 20 cities. We've had years where we've had 18, 19 mayors. Depends on what's going on with legislative session, whether we get a good legislative turnout, if they just adjourned and they're on vacation, or if, you know, it's almost better if they were still in session when, when it went on, we had better attendance.
I got to interrupt you there, because we might have to change the format with the behavior of our CAO this, this current year.
Yeah.
We had some troubling event there, so.
He picked a favorite commissioner, and it was, it was not popular with two of us. So, anyway.
You two are my favorite commissioners.
Right. But, the, the one story I wanted also to tell you is that I joined the, I was appointed as the Marion County Fair Board Treasurer in 2003, and I've, so I've been with, with the board, I'm now the liaison. I worked my way out of being actually an appointed board member, because there's only seven statutory slots, and also worked my way out of being the treasurer. But, when we started, my first fair, the cost of us using the state fairgrounds for four days was $40,000, it was a flat fee. And then, there were, was, there've been a number of fair directors, as you know, and so there was a process where they started charging for each building and each bleacher and each time they moved something, and it started working its way up, and within, I think it was four or five, maybe it was four years, it was up to $80,000, it had doubled. And so, at that point, we said, "We're done, we can't, we can't afford this." Our whole budget is what, Tammy, it's 200, I mean, it's going up now, but, yeah, 280, but at the, that's significantly more than it was back in 2003 when I started, so roughly $200,000, and when you're spending $80,000 just on the rental for the fairgrounds, you just can't make it. So, we actually voted as a fair board to move, and we were looking at the Sublimity Harvest Festival grounds, we were talking about whether we could partner with the, who does the steam up up in the Brooks area?
Antique Powerland.
Antique Powerland, yeah, we actually went up there and talked with them, and somehow the State Fair staff got wind of, you know, it was public, and there were minutes and everything, and so they called us over and met with us. And so, then we did this little thing where we were jointly going to do entertainment together, concerts. And so, their concert person, the State Fair's concert person, worked with ours, and we had a budget that we, you know, numbers that we had to fulfill, and then, once we got over that, we'd share the money, or they'd get some money, and then we'd share the money. And we figured it wouldn't break, we, we wouldn't even break even the first couple of years. Well, that lasted, I think, for two years, and then another change in administration, and then it went back to where it was $30,000, and then the next year, it was $40,000. And then, we were saying, you know, we're on the same trajectory that we were before, you know, the definition of insanity. And that's when, I think Tammy and Ellen and others, we met, and the State Fair provided us a list and said, "Look, we have all this deferred maintenance, we have needs that we have in the fairgrounds, what can governments do for each other?" And so, we were able to come forward with the, the arrangement that we have, which has been so beneficial to our fair, and hopefully, it's been beneficial to the State Fair also in terms of getting the work done that you need. So, I just want to, again, express appreciation, kind of give you the chronology of where we've been, that, you know, it was not without pain and suffering that we got to the place that we are right now, and we're feeling very good about the opportunities that it presents for us to work together. The other thing that happened when we got together that one meeting, and I'm trying to remember the name of the retired Parks Director, he was there for, do you remember? It was before Lisa Van Lannan, anyway, and he retired. And we brought over, we have a deed, I actually have a photocopy of it in my drawer, that shows that the Marion County Agricultural Society owned this property in the 1800s, and then deeded it over to the State Fair and said that, that they, the Marion County Agricultural Society would continue to get use of the grounds, even though they had deeded the land over. And so, you know, there have been many agreements and things that have happened since the 1800s, where like, wait a minute, in the spirit of this, when I comment on this in legislative session, Lisa Van Lannan would always say, "And do you want it back?" And we're like, "No, no, you can keep the state grounds."
That's okay, because we're not interested in giving it.
Exactly. But, but, Tim Wood, thank you. But, the partnership has existed for many, many years, well before we started working together. So, we have a long history of collaboration, and I'm hoping that that will continue in the future, and thank you for making that possible.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Nobody might not want to come back, but we gave a quick history lesson, but we certainly do, and I personally enjoy the fair, and I know it's a busy time for you, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here and talk to us this morning.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, as, as Commissioner Cameron stated, you know, I describe it as, "We're starting a brand-new business from a blank sheet of paper that's 150 years old, and we're sort of rebuilding the engine with the car running." It's, it's a, it's a challenging time, but it's a very exciting time for us. And as I said, the alliances that you just described, and the partnership that we have with Public Works and the Sheriff and the Marion County Fair, are going to make it possible for all of us to not just survive, but to thrive going forward. So, in, in return, we thank you for a relationship that benefits us, benefits you, it's a, it's a real win-win, and, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming. So, our second presentation is Building Official of the Year Award, and we have Ellen Haley and Warren Jackson. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ellen Haley, the Public Works Director, and Warren Jackson are Building and Planning Division Manager and Building Official. And we're here this morning for a presentation that was given to Warren as the Building Official of the Year Award at the Annual Building Officials Conference, correct?
Yeah, Oregon Building Officials Association Conference.
So, the, wanted to go through and read real quickly what the presentation was. At the Oregon Building Officials Association presented Warren Jackson with the Building Official of the Year Award in July. This award, which is the highest honor given by the association, was given in special recognition of Warren's outstanding leadership and dedicated service to building safety and his ongoing work on the Building Officials Guide. A peer and fellow Oregon Building Official Association member who submitted the nomination wrote that Warren is always ready to help, he takes my calls, he puts as much thought and energy into my questions or concerns as if they were his own. So, so it's congratulations, really, to Warren and to Public Works, and thank you for your representation. Do you have any comments?
Well, thanks. You know, I feel very honored and humbled, I, I was totally caught off-guard, and, you know, I really think a lot of the credit just goes to the amazing staff we have in our division. It's that staff that makes my job fairly easy, and I just, I really appreciate it. We have some wonderful men and women working for our division that, that really, truly work as a team, and not just as a buzzword, but they truly are a team, and I just, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ellen, for bringing that forward, and Warren, congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's give him a hand. And I just want to say that I have been impressed with your leadership and also with the, your commitment to customer service. I think that that's a strong part of why you received this award, and I know when you've been before the board, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't always said, "Yes, whatever you want, Warren." We've, we've asked you a lot of tough questions, and you've always handled that very gracefully and come back with the things that the board needs, and have always been very aware, and as we've worked together, working with the constituent groups in particular, we know, we always ask, "Have you talked to the builders? Have you talked to the farmers? Have you talked to all these different groups that have an interest in what we do in Public Works and in the building side of it?" And you're, you're just great at doing that, so thank you.
Thank you.
If I could, I, Warren has been doing great work, and maybe we don't acknowledge it often enough, and I'm going to make Commissioner Cameron tell, it's one thing to get recognition from your peers, and that's wonderful, but as far as I'm concerned, it's even better to get recognition from, from our citizens, the customers you serve. And Kevin, if you could pass on some of the Aurora Airport comments, they could be appropriate.
Yeah, just yesterday, just example of yesterday, if that's what you're referring to, Commissioner, and Ellen, I don't even know if you're aware of this, but Warren, the Aurora Airport is up there, I guess, almost a month ago, and we're going to be going up, and here in the near future, but their comment was, with the, the loss of an individual in your department who had been taking care of it for so long, and the uniqueness of the activity that goes on up there, it's very difficult, because you've got all these different codes, you've got to balance with aviation and state and county. And they were suggesting that if we could assign somebody, and just within a few hours, Warren took care of that and responded quickly and called Aaron, I believe, and said, "Here's what we're going to do." So, just really appreciate that responsiveness, sense of urgency and taking care of the customer out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
So, I think Jolene has a camera. She wants us to come down, right? If we don't come down, Warren, what do you call it?
Oh, dear, yes.
I think I want to stand on the mannequin. I don't stand around, I'm going to look like the-
That makes it turn mannequin.
Exactly, it scares us.
Alright, here you go, ready? I'm going to take a whole bunch of ones. There we go. Alright, thanks.
Thanks. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Ellen.
Always enjoy board sessions when we get to do more of this kind of thing. So, we have public comment, and no one signed up. David, did you want to say anything? You came in late. No, you're just here to watch? Okay.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you. We have consent, and I'm trying, Commissioner Brentano, I think it is your turn.
Yes, I'm ready and anxious to go. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. On it, under Board of Commissioners, we approve an order appointing Christie Weatherall as Recording Secretary for the Marion County Board of Commissioners. Finance, approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property located at 2893 Sunny View Road Northeast. Oh, that's a big number. Approve Amendment Number 14 to the contract with Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network in the amount of $18 million through December 31st, 2015. Public Works approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation in the amount of $940,000 for reimbursement for the 2014-15 pavement preservation program expenses, and approve a quitclaim deed to the city of Salem for a sewer easement off of Lancaster Drive.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and just to comment on the, on your comment, on the $18 million. So, these are funds that come for mental health services, and we have been operating with the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network on a contract for many years, and so the contract expired, I believe, end of December or January, and there was an effort to create a new and revised contract that had language that was aligned with the language between the Behavioral Care Network and the Coordinated Care Organization, and that sort of reached impasse after a number of months, and so, we've had a meeting and kind of picked it up and going to move forward. So, the agreement was, "Let's just extend the existing contract so that we're operating under a contract and not operating without a contract," which we have been now for eight months, "until we can get this new contract in place." So, this is just an extension of a contract that's been existing for a long time that pays for great services for people who need them. So, any further discussion? Those in favor of approving the consent items say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alright. And then, our one and only action item is under Business Services, and it is consider approval of the purchase order contract with Fysen Krupp-
TKE.
Elevator Corporation, TKE. So, she's not going to help me. In the amount of $315,752 to provide elevator modernization services to the Health Services Building. And we have Colleen Coons Chafens, who is our Business Services Director, and Larry Tilford in Business Services, and then Gloria, it looks like your name is on here, too, for whatever reason, so it must be legal reason, right? Moral support.
Moral support.
Alright, so, Colleen, you want to start?
Sure. As you know, Commissioners were doing, getting ready to undergo a big project in the Health Services Building, and when we were looking at this, decided that the elevators needed to be included in that project. One of the elevators is down due to safety reasons, and so, we wanted to get this going when the project is going on, so that we can get them both up before the project starts. And the elevators were initially done in 1974, so they're 41 years old and totally need modernization, as well as some safety implementation, so that's what we're working towards. So, that's what this pe, purchase order and procurement request is about, and if you have any further questions, happy to answer them.
If I could, I did have a couple, and they're just rather simple. So, were there several bidders for providing these services? Is there any change in the capacity of these, or speed, or what's new and improved, and why did you choose this one?
We have a whole list. We have a state procurement agreement with the state, so the, the folks, TKE, Tysen Krupp, are already on that state procurement agreement, so that's why we're using them. We've used elevator, other elevator companies in the past, but these are who we currently had our contract with. So, we submitted this PO just to do this modernization, because they've been doing the maintenance on them. In fact, we just had Architecture Elevator Consulting come in and do a, a review of all of our elevators, so that we'd understand what the needs are and what's going on, so we have that. And they said, "Tysen Krupp is the most likely candidate who've been doing this, they know the work, they know what they need to be done to modernize it and to fix the issues that are ongoing." So, the speeds don't increase, but we are getting new ropes, pulleys, we're going to put in some VFDs that'll make our controllers a lot easier, more modernized, up-to-date technology-wise. Also, they'll be putting some seismic retrofits in there to make sure that seismically, the elevators are safe and sound. Those are some of the main things, and replacing the cabs. So, right now, they're bright orange, and they'll be changing the color of the interior cabs as well, they're from 1974, so that's part of the project.
I generally like bright orange, I don't understand that.
I, I'm hoping you could put them in your house, that might be something you could put in your garage.
Alright, fine, thank you.
Well, if I recall, there was an incident when the Health Department moved a safe from, did you, Larry, were you here when that happened? And they put it on the elevator, and like, it came crashing down?
I heard of it.
So, yeah, it was, it was really pretty spectacular, so that, I think those elevators have taken a lot of wear over the years, so it's probably time.
They have, and one of the recommendations was to actually put a third elevator in to reduce some of the wear and everything going on, but that's another project we'll have to talk about later.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the purchase order contract with Fysen Krupp Elevator Corporation in the amount of $315,752 to provide elevator modernization services to the Health Services Building.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion and a second, and there's one more question. Where's the money coming from?
There's actually two, we're going to take it out of the EAIP funds, the EIP funds, part of it comes out of there, and part of it is out of the capital budget.
Okay, but we, we have dollars in the budget to cover it.
Yes, yes, we do.
EIAP funds, please?
It's the Employment Insurance Appropriation Program. There we go. I, I, it's EAIP.
Okay.
Alright. Employment Insurance, yeah, I'm trying to remember the name of it.
That's related to the safety of the elevators for workers, as well as clients coming through, so.
So, it seemed appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright.
Alright.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll be hearing more.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our meeting. We don't have any public hearings, no other action items. It's Wednesday, August 19th. We're just completing our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Tomorrow, Thursday, August 20th, at the Public Works Building out on Silverton Road in the North Santee Am Room, is a meeting of the Parks Commission for Marion County, and that starts at 9:00 and goes to noon. Also, tomorrow, Thursday, August 20th, at 11:45 to 1:00, is the United Wake Community Celebration and Luncheon, that will be held at the Salem Convention Center here in Salem. Then, Monday, August 24th, at 8:30, we have Board of Commissioners' Calendar Review in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor here at Courthouse Square. That will be followed at 9:00 by a management update, and then a BOC/CAO meeting, that's Board of Commissioners' Chief Administrative Officers' Meeting at 11:00, with an executive session if needed, and that will also be held in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor at Courthouse Square. On Tuesday, August 25th, at 8:30 a.m. to 10:00, is a meeting of the Community Corrections Board, also in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor, Courthouse Square. And at 10:15, that will be followed by a meeting of the Marion County Housing Authority, it's a regular board meeting, in the Silverton Conference Room. Then, a week from today, August 26th, at 9:00 a.m., we will be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. And at 2:30 on August 26th, will be a taping for CCTV, that will be at the Capital Community Television Studios at 575 Trade Street, Southeastern Salem. So, this is an opportunity for the board to create a public access television program, and we highlight different issues that are of interest to Marion County residents. The topic, I believe, for this upcoming one is on the community health assessments and kind of what's going on with public health in our community. So, that should be a fun one to record, and then it will be shown everywhere, and we'll see how many people watch it, so, that's the end. Anything else for the good of the order?
I don't know if it's for the good of the order, but things I've been thinking about lately. We have a Parks Commission meeting, and I don't know if maybe both of you are going to attend, but anyway, I've been supposed to be the person on that, but there's always been conflicts, I think I've only attended one or two meetings, but I'm really hoping to, in this next year, year or years, upgrade what we're doing with the parks and make some decisions to change it up and make it better. The other one I have, and you're going to hear a lot about it, I'm more and more concerned about our gravel roads in Marion County, I've come up with a conclusion, like, that's 40% of our roads, and, and they're in bad shape, and I don't mean to- And I don't mean to set off a firestorm, I think everybody lives out in the country knows that. But got to find a way to do a better job.
So, I don't think I will be going to the Parks Commission meeting, but I am very much in favor of taking a look at how they're allocating the funds that they get, what staffing they have. We talked about this way back when, when I was first a commissioner and there was kind of an agreement that they would come forward every year with a capital project. In fact, I went out, I did what you did when I was first a commissioner and I went, you know, with all these different departments and did tours. And they did a tour of the different parks with me. And the gentleman who was the staff person has long retired, but he told me a story that just broke my heart about a woman that lived in the Jan Ray area and wanted to buy kind of a big toy, you know, a real big toy type of playground because the parks equipment up there was, you know, it was the old swing sets with the chains on them and, you know, not very safe equipment. So, she was having bake sales and trying to raise money. And then, they came back and told her that it would cost $30,000 to put in such a piece of equipment. And she started to cry, is what he said. And I was just like, "Oh, my goodness, you know, and what, you know, what are we doing? Are we asking for it? Well, you know, the board never wants us to bring forward anything." Well, how do we know what you need if you don't bring anything forward? So, we started the process and we actually, they came forward and I think we matched it. They were able to get some grant money or something and then we put 15 in. We said, "Well, let's just do that every year." Well, that lasted until we went into those years when John said absolutely no decision packages because the economy was in recession and we were, we reduced our staff by 30 positions, a lot of them in the sheriff's office. And so, we, things were pretty dire. And I think now that things have picked up, you know, we tried to get the message out this time and I think they did come forward with some proposals. But it's always been a scarcity mentality with them, you know. And even, and before that, the story that I heard is that they were combined with City of Salem. And the marriage ended in divorce and Salem got all the stuff.
I know they used to.
Right, yeah.
Go together.
Right, and they, and so, there were some hard feelings, especially the staff person was telling me the story that retired that was part of that, you know, that it didn't work out and that somehow, we got the short end of the stick when the dissolution happened. So, you know, I think we've got some work to do. And the good news is that we're putting in campsites. And once we have RV space, we are eligible to go after some pretty significant state grants, which we haven't gone after before. And I used to be on the committee that reviewed those grants and I'd bring back examples of the proposals, you know, like Lynn County's getting, you know, $500,000 or $700,000 to put these things in their parks. Kind of what are we doing? Can we put together a proposal? And I was always told, "Well, we don't do RVs, so we can't go after that money." But we do now, so. I'd be interested in exploring what grants we have, what needs they have with staff. Are we working with the juvenile department still? Do we use work crews? You know, I mean, really get down into how we're doing.
I'm going to take this a little different direction. I've come up with this conclusion, right or wrong, that a lot of these parks were given to the county as, to put in a subdivision or project and they give something. And I think we ought to have a discussion of whether we want to accept that. And I would use the example of Santana Park, how the people finally came together, "We're the ones that use it, we're the ones that care," and took it over. And I think it should be internal to that subdivision in a certain size that they have a way to take care of the park that's really for their service. So, little change and maybe we just don't accept them blindly.
Well, that was the original idea in that parks plan. And we actually discussed that and changed the language in it because they were saying that they were going to give away all of those community parks. And I'm in favor of doing what Santana Park did. In fact, I was a strong advocate for it. But I'm not in favor of us just saying, "Well, you know, let's just not do anything until someone takes it over."
No, I'm not talking about parks we have. I'd like to do what we can to make those better. That was my, I'm talking about if it comes up in a future development, it comes in and say, "Okay, this square is for the county for a park." And we'd say, "That's fine, but it's for this subdivision." And you figure out a way to fund it and maintain it. Because it really is for those people in that neighborhood.
You know, I've been touring, like you said, I've been touring some of the parks and I think of our parks as, well, you know, the Economic Development Board and the travel and tourism, especially in the parks that are up in the canyon. I mean, we're talking about community parks in a neighborhood versus.
There, that's a.
Parks that are, that are, people are traveling to and going through. And I think that, you know, we have community, not a lot, but we have community grant money that we could, you know, get, we really do need to get some people with some vision to say, "Where are we with our parks? And what are our top priorities? Where are they getting visited? What, you know, what?" I still have a sign, the top of a sign in my driveway at home that I picked up that's been broken off for, I don't know how many months. And I haven't taken it over to Public Works, I stole their sign, basically.
We all know now.
But just the condition of it, and we've got so many resources. If we had somebody who was leading that. And, you know, it's not bashing anybody, we just need to focus on it and let them know that this is important.
It's our responsibility, I think.
It is, yeah.
Maybe all of it, I don't know.
You know, maybe next year when we get into the community grants, we get the, we get the parks people to put together a plan as to what their priorities are. And maybe we can find some lottery dollars that would help with the park plus the RV funds that we're now eligible for. We could actually put some resources in. Sometimes it's money and sometimes it's just attention that we need to do somehow, so.
Right, well, the other, the other piece to keep in mind is that right about the time I came on the board, which was in 2003, the county shifted, the Parks Department people, Environmental Services, whatever, brought forward to the board, but our whole philosophy was going to be around natural heritage parks. So, any park that we had or parkland that we purchased would be kept in its natural state and wouldn't be for recreation, it would be for, you know, the.
Conservation.
The plants and, you know, being part of nature and just keeping things, you know, looking the way they are so there would be no development. And so.
We have a lot of that in the state.
So, there, so, and I think, I mean, part of it was a philosophy piece, but part of it also was, "Well, if we don't have any staff and we can't keep up any parks and we need parkland, let's just get parks that we don't have to do anything to." So, that's part of that big plan that I, you know, that you guys.
You sent us.
Right, and I've got it printed off and sitting on there. So, I think those types of understandings need to be clear also because there may be mixed messages. If that's the approved, if that's the plan the board approved and it's got that piece in it, then we need to be able to bring that plan back and adjust it to what this board wants to do.
That would explain some of the parks that we toured that were just kind of hardly mowed and buried that, that isn't a park in my book.
Right, so, just, now that you're on the Parks Commission, you know, so.
I'll figure it out.
All right. Anything else? That's a good discussion.
Well, you know, one of the things you missed on the calendar that I think is really important is the tour of Lamont Valley Pie on Friday.
Oh, it wasn't on the calendar.
No, it's because I get to go.
Oh.
That is right.
Somebody told me to save him some pie.
That'd be a good idea.
All right.
All right, just trying to see if I'm doing anything that fun and I'm not, so. I'm doing minutes. Anyway, all right, well, that was a good meeting and I think with that, we will adjourn.